Yes.
Yes, the L I S meeting. I can sit down.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is approximately five thirty-three P M. This is the Building Committee and Finance and Audit Committee meeting, and I call this meeting to order. I will call row for the Building Committee. Jorge Delgado, present. Mercurio Martinez, Junior.
Present.
Lupita Zapata.
Present.
Esteban Angel, absent.
Absent.
We'll call row for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Esteban Angel, absent. Tita Bella.
Here.
Mercurio Martinez, Junior.
Present.
And Jorge Delgado, present. All right, we will move on to agenda item number three, approval to add the more vocational welding lab improvements to the facility's master plan phase three bond projects and assignment of architect for said project. Mister Cesar Vela?
Good evening, Board members. Cesar Vela, Vice President of Finance Administration. For the record, this first item, we are asking the board consideration to approve, for approval to add the more improvements to the more vocational welding lab facility using a facility master plan based three bond funds and also to assign an architect for this project. This project, if you can see here on the screen, the reason that we are making this request is that we do need to work on the ventilation of these welding labs. During the summertime, we do experience a large, extremely high temperatures because of the equipment and just the temperature that we experience in Laredo. So the proposal is to add a covered area over the courtyard. You have a picture there of a steel canopy. So essentially, the idea is to cover the courtyard area with a steel canopy so that we can expand the welding labs to that area, having an open environment. So the work will entail a steel structure and additional electrical work, adding power to that area so that we can move some of the welding equipment to that area. Also, we are proposing to add some ventilation to the east side wall or the east side labs so that we can allow more fresh air to go into that area. And you have a picture there of what we're currently looking at, proposing. Again, this is a lower improvement for ventilation at the east side wall, and you can see there the proposed locations of this ventilation system. Again, the proposal is to add the project. We have allocated approximately a million dollars for the steel structure and the ventilation system. The funding would come from Facilities Master Plan Phase Two savings. We had allocated one point four million for the Ruben Garcia building improvements. Right now, we're projecting that those will come in around nine hundred thousand. So we are projecting that we'll have four hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred forty-four available from that project. And then the difference would come, which is a five hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-six will come from the allocation that we have for furniture and equipment out of the phase three bond project. Again, we feel that this project should be a priority so that we can obviously alleviate some of that heat that's generated in those areas. As far as the architect, we are proposing to appoint Sebulveda and Associates. They are currently under contract as part of the facilities bond projects. The reason that we're making that recommendation is that Mr. 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 Sebula was the architect that worked on this building as part of phase one. When we did the phase one project, he was the one that did the additional expansions. So he has pretty much all the plans already for this building. Again, it's typically just what we consider a small project. Obviously, it's more than that, but obviously, doing that steel structure over the courtyard and adding ventilation to the east side welding lab in this building. There is a proposal to expand the courtyard so that we can add additional space, storage space for equipment and supplies. However, looking at the budget, that may not be feasible, but again, we are going to consider that. And that would be adding a space to the south side of the courtyard area, just to enclose it. But again, if the funding is available, again, priority is to make sure that we are able to move the equipment out to the open area so that we can increase circulation in those labs. So again, that is the recommendation that we have for the Friday meeting. Again, requesting approval to add to the project, to the bond three projects, and that we are allowed to use savings from those two projects to fund the project and the assignment of Sebula architects and associates so that they can work on the plans.
Any questions from members of the committee?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vela. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number four, approval of Ruben Garcia roof improvements and building renovations, Facilities Master Plan Phase Two Bond Project. Minister Cesar Vela?
Yes, members of the board, we're asking that the board consider awarding a contract to American Contracting Roofing in the amount of nine hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-five for Ruben Garcia building roof improvements, interior paint work and ceiling tile replacement at this facility. The contract is under TIPS contract number two hundred, two oh one, dash fifty-one, ninety-six. The funding for this project is out of phase two. We have allocated one point one, one million, four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred nineteen for this project. Currently, right now, the proposal is to do the roof and interior paint. So the total cost would be nine hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-five. There would be a balance left over for this project of four hundred fifty-four thousand, one forty-four, which is what we're proposing to use for the welding lab expansion project. Again, you do have a copy of the proposal alongside the scope of work that will be done for this particular build. The warranty on the, on the, on the product that will be utilized for this, for the roofing project, which is a Kornak product at the twenty-year warranty, and there is a two-year installer warranty by the contractor. The total amount of nine hundred fifty-three thousand, one seventy-five also includes a contingency amount of seventy-five thousand, and that will be used only with college approval for any unforeseen items that may come up during the work. We are allocating six months for this project because we do have a quick turnaround for this building. There is a current proposal that we're working on to possibly house an early college high school at that building. So if that contract is approved and there is an agreement, the facility would need to be ready by July first for that entity to move in and start the fall classes.
And the contractor is available?
We checked with the contractor, the contractor is available, and they have confirmed that they can do the work within the timeframe that we have allocated for the project.
Has this project been compared to other projects that American Contracting has done? With regards to the price and the cost?
We are currently looking at that, Mr. Vela. Yes, I, I, I did ask the question of our physical plan director to verify the, the contract amount. And he's still working on that, and we should have a response for the Friday.
And does American Contracting have certification to apply for TRIMCO? Because I see that they only had one for Kornak that was issued in May of twenty twenty-one.
We can get that information, Mr. Delgado. I believe that they only submitted the one for the Kornak product, which is the one that they're going to use for this project. But we can verify that information.
And I know what the information that was submitted is that they've been utilizing Kornak for six years, but their certification for installations is only was issued in May of twenty twenty-one.
We'll verify that. It might be that it's, it's those type of trainings and certifications that have to be renewed. So that may be the most recent one, but we'll confirm that information also.
Any other questions for members of the committee? All right, thank you, Mr. Vela. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five, approval of guaranteed maximum price for the Lamar Baruni Vergara Environmental Project. Mister Cesar Vela?
Yes, members of the board, we are going to add to defer this item to the January meeting. We are still currently waiting on numbers from the contractor. As of this afternoon, we did receive notice that they're still working on one of the items. We are scheduling a meeting with the architect and the contractor to review those numbers, and hopefully have those ready for the January meeting.
Any concerns or questions for members of the committee? All right. Thank you, Mr. Vela. We'll move on to agenda item number six, approval of Laredo College South Campus Driving Pad Plaque. Mister Cesar Vela?
Yes, this one item. We're asking the board to approve the plaque for the commercial driving license pad at the South Campus. That project has been completed, and we are working on the dedication of the facility. Included within your board package is a copy of the plaque. We do have an updated plaque. Policy, current local policy indicates that the board members listed on the plaque have to be the current board members at the time of dedication. We did just have a board member sworn in last night, and we do have one more that will be sworn in in January. So right now, the plaque that you're seeing on the screen is the updated plaque. And again, we do understand that also there may be some other changes still to come. But this is just a sample of what the plaque would look. Again, if we do have any changes, we'll make those changes after the January meeting. But this is what the local policy requires, that we list the current board members at time of dedication and also the date of dedication. So right now, the date that we're showing on the plaque is February of twenty twenty-three. So I'm sure you'll get notification on the day this, when the dedication will occur. But again, this is, this is the, the item that's for approval at the Friday meeting.
Any questions from members of the committee?
And just as, as a, you got this as an added as you walked in because the one inside the packet was the previous one. Okay. Just want to make sure everybody has updated one.
All right, and just another point, in your packet, you have a location of where the plaque is going to be placed. This is a temporary location. We are going to add an area just as on the entrance of the facility where the plaque will be placed. Right now, it is currently being displayed at one of the columns that we have. It's part of the outside fence. But we are planning to have a wall where we'll put the plaque, the official plaque on. So that'll, that'll be worked on once we have the plaque.
Question? Sure, sure, organize this.
I do have comments.
Go ahead.
I think this is something that we really need to look at in the program and policy because personally, I feel that the people, the trustees' names should be those that worked on it from day one. And you know, instead of someone that's just walking in, that's just my personal feeling. You know, I know that a lot of us have been here for a long time, others, long, whatever it is. But you know, we've put time into it, and I think that those are the names that should appear and not someone that doesn't know what's going on. This, just to maybe again revisit it, revisit the policy because it just, it doesn't sound hate to use the word fair, but, but it is.
Definitely make recommendations to the government policy committee. Thank you, Mr. Vela. Mister Vela, how much do these cost?
We're, we're getting the costs also. As a matter of fact, let me just check. We got that information. We requested that information.
And we can get that information very quickly. Yeah, but thank you.
We'll have it for you.
Any other questions from the committee?
I just agree with Mrs. Delago.
All right, moving on to agenda item number seven, the ratification of change order for Mata Rio Gym plumbing repairs. Mister Cesar Vela?
Yes, members of the board, this item is requesting that the board ratify a change order in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred five dollars and eighty-nine cents for additional plumbing repairs at the Mata Rio Gym. The repairs have been completed by Cuba Contracting del Oxy under Bible Contract number six thirty-eight dash twenty-one. This project was, was approved by the board back in September for plumbing repairs at the Mata Rio Gym. During the course of this work, we discovered that there were additional lines that needed to be replaced. Old cast iron lines that were under the men's shower area and in one of the mechanical rooms. So that additional work needed to be completed in order for the facility to be ready. In addition to that, there was additional work where the contractor removed the old water heaters that were at the Mata Rio Gym. Those items also need to be replaced. But again, so the work has been completed. So the facilities are ready for, for use. Again, the, the original contract amount that had been approved was seventy-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-six. With the addition of the change order, that amount has gone up to one hundred eight thousand, one hundred nine thousand, sorry, two hundred and seventy-two.
Any questions from members of the committee?
So all the bathrooms, everything is working now at the gym?
So the bathrooms are working, and so now we, we were having problems with that area. Again, only one of the bathrooms is working. So the bathrooms are working now.
But did they replace, excuse me, I'm sorry, did they replace the hot water heaters?
The water heaters, the only thing that we did right now was remove the old ones. We still need to replace those, and those will be done in-house by the.
So right now, everything works, but there's no hot water? Okay.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, October twenty twenty-two financial report. Mister Cesar Vela?
Included within your board package, you received a copy of the October twenty twenty-two financial report. This is for the second, second month of operations for twenty twenty-three. As of October thirty-first, our revenue stands at fifteen million, eight thousand, one hundred forty-one. That's twenty-two point six percent of our budgeted revenue. Tuition and fee tuition collections for the fall semester to two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven. Last year, again, we did not have any tuition. We had waited for the fall semester. We are pending to record the tuition for the dual enrollment program. That information is pending. We should have it for the next board report. Again, the state appropriations, twenty-four percent has been collected, and that is in line with the schedule that is provided by the state. Tax collections for the month of October, they total three million, two hundred one thousand, one hundred two, seven point six percent of our budgeted revenue. We don't collect for the month of September, so this is the first payment for the year for tax collections. Again, overall, the collection, the revenue stands at fifteen million for the first two months of operations or twenty-two, twenty-two point six percent of our budgeted revenue. As far as expenditures, expenditures for the year stand at ten million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred seventy-six. That represents fifteen, fifty percent of our budgeted expenditures. We do not have any variances to report at the time. We are in line with with expenses for the year, what we had projected for the first two months of operations. Again, we're at fifteen point fifty percent of our budgeted expenditures at this time. Any questions on revenues? As far as the other fund balances for the for the special appropriations, we have for the year budgeted two hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three. We have received revenue of twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy, or eight percent of our budget. Expenses are fourteen thousand, nine hundred forty-six, six point one percent of our budget. We do have, for the first two months, a net increase to the fund balance of seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven. The primary revenue for this program is mainly state appropriations. For auxiliary services, the revenue stands at six hundred twelve thousand, ninety-seven dollars. That represents forty-two point nine three percent of our budget. And this is revenue for the fall semester. It includes the student activity fee, books or commissions, residential revenue. Expenses primarily out of the student services total one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight for the first two months or eight point five percent of our budget. So for the first two months, we do have an increase to the fund balance of four hundred ninety thousand, two hundred fifty-nine. For restricted funds, those are state, state grants and payroll grants. Revenues and expenses are nine point eight million. The bulk of that revenue and expense is the pill grants that we receive for the fall semester. Again, we don't have any major variances. As far as curve funding, we have already received all that revenue in the previous year. We do have a balance due available that will be used for, as we mentioned in the past, for an incentive that we're planning for this spring semester. We have approximately about one point five million that is earmarked for that incentive. The Facilities Master Plan Phase Three. The balance at the beginning of the year for the current projects that are outstanding totals seventeen million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred. For the year, we have recorded interest revenue of sixty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty. Expenditures for the year, construction expenditures total for the first two months, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-four. For net change or decrease of four hundred sixty thousand, four hundred fourteen. So as of October thirty-first, the balance for construction funds is seventeen million, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-six. And I apologize on the heading on this, but this is the monthly investment report as of October thirty-first, not the quarterly investment report. Total investments and deposits for October total one hundred eleven million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, fifty dollars. Eighty-eight million is in bank deposits. We do have a U S T B O of three point five million currently right now. of, uh, three point five million, currently right now, the market value is three point three, um, million, uh, but it would, it will, uh, it, uh, at maturity, it will be three point five million is what is invested, invested. Uh, investment pools of eighteen million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, two hundred eighty-one. Uh, and you can see that the interest rates have been going up, uh, currently the money market accounts are yielding two point thirty-one percent. Uh, both the, uh, loan star and the F I T investment pools are, uh, uh, two point sixty-eight and two point sixty-four. And the, uh, U S P bill is at three, three point zero one percent. Uh, and lastly, just a quick update on the general operating fund balance as we're working on closing out the fiscal year for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the books have been finalized, uh, we're closing out the audit for the year. So for twenty-twenty-two, we had a net increase to the fund balance of six million, eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred five dollars. Uh, we have recorded the pension liability expense for the year, and that totaled one point three million, a million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, eighty-eight. Uh, we did get a credit, uh, to the Gatsby seventy-five of one point two million, uh, again, the expenditure actually we, it was not an expenditure, we actually received the additional support from the state when it came to the, uh, uh, post-employment benefits. So the, uh, net change, uh, for twenty-twenty-two totaled four million, five hundred, I'm sorry, the, uh, fund balance as of twenty-twenty-two is now four million, five hundred two thousand, eight hundred fifty-six. So if you look at twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you've seen that we were at a negative thirteen point nine million back in twenty nineteen, and this was again attributed to the pension liability and the post-employment liability. We brought it down to twelve point nine, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we had additional revenues for her funding. Uh, so that, uh, brought the, uh, deficit down to two point five million. And this year, we have now gone to, uh, into the black now, not, we're not, no longer showing a red on the fund balance. Uh, and again, one, this is accounting for those liabilities, so at this point right now, like I had mentioned in the past, if the state were to say those liabilities are due, we would need, we would not need to borrow money to pay those liabilities. And we would still be left with four point five million in our fund balance. So again, we're, we're one of those institutions that has gotten out of that negative, uh, fund balance this fiscal year. Uh, and one, one thing to note is, uh, the resolution that the board passed um, of allocating twenty percent of the savings, the annual savings to the deferred maintenance projects. So, uh, last year, uh, we allocated, uh, two point four million, which is the, that, uh, negative that you see, negative number of deduction that you see there for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. That, uh, two point four went to the deferred maintenance projects. Uh, we have not recorded yet the, the twenty percent that will be allocated for twenty twenty-three, and that will be twenty percent of the six point eight million that will be going into the, uh, deferred maintenance project, so we're looking at about another one point three million going in there. And so we got a couple of projects that have already been identified and, uh, are listed, and we do have them practicalized. And those projects, uh, will be, will bring forward to the, to the board as we get ready to work on, on them. Uh, any questions on the, uh, report?
All right, thank you, Mr. Bella. So we'll move on to agenda item number nine, ratification of Campus Logic Agreement for Scholarship Universe Annual Licenses, Mr. Sestavella.
This next item is, uh, the requesting the board, uh, will ratify, uh, five-year agreement with Campus Logic for the, uh, Scholarship Universe Annual Licenses in the amount of, uh, one hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred forty dollars. Uh, we do currently have, uh, an agreement with Campus Logic for, uh, the financial aid component. Uh, so we are, uh, now have asked to add this service, uh, for Scottish Universe. Uh, and this, uh, module will help us streamline the scholarship process. Uh, again, by automating the process and matching students to scholarships based on established criteria that will be entered into the system. Uh, also, students will be able to submit scholarship applications online. Uh, and also, uh, uh, the, the, the system has the capability of sending alerts to students if they're pending any information, uh, if they need to take action on, on, on items. And then obviously, we'll send also under terms scholarship updates and whether via email or through text. Uh, the term of the agreement, uh, runs from December first, twenty twenty-two through, uh, November thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Um, the first year of twenty thou- twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty is being funded, uh, using curve funds. So these will not impact the general operating budget for twenty twenty-three, we'll be using curve funding to pay for the first year. Uh, for years two through five will be budgeted in it as, uh, part of all operations for the financial analysis. So again, the total five years for this, uh, service is one hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred forty. Um, again, the first year will be covered by curve funding.
How much is this adding to, uh, what are we currently paying with Campus Logic? How much? Do you know?
I don't have the, the number, uh, if you add in the.
All right.
So if I may add, just so a- as a benefit to this, so what this does is it allows us to interface with the student information system. It also helps us to try to use the scholarship monies that we have in the system, once we put it all in there, to use as a recruitment tool instead of giving or awarding the money as an afterthought. And therefore helping us to increase the student pool population, right? Uh, by being able to offer this ahead of time when students apply. Uh, we do use, currently use Campus Logic for, um, for, for the ongoing communication with students, they have the, both a texting opportunity and an email opportunity. Most of the students opt in for a text, uh, opportunity, they can take pictures of their documents, upload it into the system, and it will automatically upload into the, into their file, so that they can, if they're chosen for verification by the federal government, then all of that interfaces. And so it streamlines the process and eliminates a lot of the manual Excel spreadsheet, looking for checking, checking different screens on manner to figure out if students qualify or not.
What would students be able to take advantage of?
Um, we want hopeful implementation by fall of twenty-three. Cause, um, we have an individual who'll be working on the input of all of the current scholarship data into the system and, and, and literally it, it takes the paper document, you take the paper document that the donor signs, and, and then you start to enter that information into, into the Scholarship Universe. They, and all of this functionality works overnight, so wherever you enter today will be live tomorrow. And, and in some cases, you can run, let's say you enter a bunch of stuff all morning, you can, you can run it to post anytime you want, so. But for the most part, it posts onto the system at night, and it's programmed to do that, so that there's always up-to-date information. Right now, it depends on when the business office has time to reconcile the things, sometimes it's monthly, sometimes it's quarterly. And so we don't ever have a running total on each account.
No.
So. Did you get that? Um.
Yes, actually, we do have, uh, the number for the, uh, other contract, uh, the annual amount that we pay, uh, for the, uh, other components, uh, for the year is one hundred thirteen thousand, seven dollars.
That's in addition to this, or that's?
This is in addition to the twenty-eight thousand that we're, we're adding.
How much left over in curve funding do we have?
Uh, we have, again, we have one point five that are earmarked for the incentive, and we have about maybe, uh, close to three hundred thousand that that will cover this type of expenditures.
What's the deadline for that?
Uh, it's, uh, May of, uh, the end of May of twenty twenty-three.
By the way, there's talk that that might be extended until the end of summer of twenty-three, so, uh, stay tuned. That's today.
It's gonna make Sestavella nervous.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions from the committee?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to agenda item, excuse me, moving on to agenda item number ten, approval of a Laredo Housing Authority pilot agreement, Mr. Sestavella.
Uh, yes, uh, board members, this, uh, item, uh, we are asking that the board, uh, uh, allow the college president, administration, and legal counsel to, uh, review the terms and, uh, negotiate a contract with, uh, L H A uh, for the use of, uh, the pilot, uh, funds. Uh, uh, we do have Ms. Mary, the owner and executive director of the L H A, that, uh, will give us a, a quick, uh, summary of how they plan to utilize these funds.
Good evening, Mary Holland, uh, executive director of the Laredo Housing Authority. Uh, currently, uh, the Laredo Housing Authority has two hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-two in pilot funds from, uh, two thousand and eight to twenty twenty-two. These are, are funds that, in order for us to, to utilize them, then we need to have an agreement, and that's why we're coming to the college to, to have this agreement. Uh, we're requesting this, uh, we're proposing to utilize, uh, a hundred and, uh, seventy-five thousand of that, uh, funds to, for transitional housing for homeless, uh, Laredo college students, uh, forty thousand for, uh, student, uh, emergency fund that would, uh, be managed by the, by the, the college to where, uh, it would, we're proposing, you, it would allow assistance of up to a thousand dollars for each, uh, student on an annual basis for an emergency. So it would be forty thousand of that, and then, uh, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred, uh, uh, for bibliotech program, which would cover, uh, part-time staff salary, software equipment, design or any, uh, prototype, uh, for future facilities. In addition, we're estimating anywhere from twenty to twenty-five thousand of future funds that we would propose to use fifteen thousand of that for the bibliotechs and then ten thousand to add to the student emergency fund on an annual basis.
Very nice. First, uh, chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
But a house in Quer- what house in both of the, is it on campus or where is the house?
It's off-campus, we have, uh, ten, uh, on fifteen oh five, okay. We, we've, uh, got ten units there that we have, uh, already equipped two units to have, uh, to allow four students in each, there are two-bedroom, two two-bedroom units, and it would allow for four students per, per unit. We've, uh, furnished them, and we've got, uh, computers and, and everything there for the students.
Chair recognizes Ms. Bella.
Do we have a lot of students that are homeless? Unfortunately, we just, uh, that's just the right spot. And so there's, there's a, there's a huge need for the, the emergency fund, um, is something that we're, uh, looking forward to because, uh, on any given day, any one of our students will have an issue with, for example, their car the, needs a new battery, and they don't have money to buy a new battery, and therefore they can't come to school. So wh- what we envision in doing with the emergency fund is we paying directly to the vendor.
Right.
So that we assure that the student, you know, gets assisted and gets supported immediately, and we go directly to the vendor and say, all right, take, you know, we're gonna have your car at Firestone or, or Pet Boy or whatever it is, and we're gonna pay them directly to have the battery installed in your car. There, you don't have to worry about it. Uh, and, and we're able to keep receipts and be accountable to them for the money that's expended through that emergency fund.
So.
Sure. Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Uh, what about the actual housing that we have on campus, uh, can any of these, uh, be, uh, uh, remodeled or improved or may, may, may it possible for, for, well, our students in, in addition to probably even faculty for that matter?
Sure. Chair recognizes President Martinez.
So to, to answer your question right now, uh, of the facilities that, the housing facilities that we have, uh, we are using them to house the Environmental Science Center, a, a portion of them. The environment, we had to put the animals somewhere, and so we're using that. Three of the facilities are going to be used by our workforce programs for electrical and HVAC, uh, to practice and, and to get experience on as well. Uh, and then we're working on an additional prospective contract uh, with one of our current tenants, uh, that would like to rent all of them. Uh, as they bring in people to train through our facilities, and so, um, so we're trying to hold on to some of that right now, uh, in, in hopes of, hopefully in January is coming back to you all with, with three new contracts of possible, um, support there, so hopefully we can get those all taken care of. Uh, we do have right now two faculty members that are living on campus, uh, and, uh, but having said that, we're, we're cognizant of the fact that those, uh, houses are, or small apartment housing living are available for that should an emergency arise.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Chair recognizes President Sestavella.
I just have a question, as far as the location of these apartments, transportation to the homeless students, so would they use public transportation?
Many of them do, and we, we can, two things, through the emergency fund, we can facilitate a bus pass for them for the entire semester that allows them to, um, the agreement with, uh, El Metro is that they, we buy a bus pass, and they can get on and off as many times a day as they need to with that bus pass, there's no limit to and, and it, it's not a declining balance either, so they can hop on and off as many times as they need, so they need to come to here, and then go to work, and then come back in the evening, or whatever, it's, it's possible, and we can use the emergency fund for that. Uh, but in, in most cases, they have a way of getting to and from. Now, if that became an issue, then we would work with the student to help them find transportation accordingly. Ideally, it would be, uh, getting them a, a bus pass to, to get to and from.
Mr. Chair. Also, with this, with this agreement and with this, uh, uh, we have a grant that, uh, has, uh, social services, we have a case manager that we've hired for this facility, and we also provide bus, uh, bus tickets for them. So we have food assistance and, and transportation assistance that would be provided for them.
Chair recognizes Ms. Bella.
You know, I remember some time ago, uh, we had one of the presidents of our student organization, it's been a while, and she came up or went and visited, do you remember, with the El Met- with the El Metro? And they got free passes for our students, you know, from, I think from Jarvis Plaza here or something. So, if, you know, we have had that done before, and, and back to our dorms. They're not in good shape, the last time we saw, we saw them quite some time ago, they were.
So the prospective donor, the prospective person wants them as-is and will fix them.
Person, perfect.
Very good.
And will get contact ops.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions for members of the committee?
No.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mom.
All right, I might add, just for full disclosure, pardon me, sir, but, uh, one of our administrators, Dr. Tejada is, uh, a member of their board, and so it's very helpful, she was able to give some really strong insight about the needs for our students and, um, some of the things that we needed, so because of her participation in that, we were able to come up with this agreement with them, and so we're very grateful to the Housing Authority and certainly for her service to that organization just now.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eleven, approval to purchase communication equipment for campus police, Mr. Sestavella. Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number eleven. Approval to purchase communication equipment for campus police, Mr. Cesar.
Uh, yes, members of the board, uh, the next item is to request approval for the purchase communicate, communication equipment for campus police. Uh, this will upgrade the communication equipment that uh campus police currently has. Uh, we're looking at upgrading all the uh equipment for our police vehicles as well as the officers. Uh, the uh total cost of the equipment is three hundred one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and four cents. Uh, the funding uh was approved by the board uh to come out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two savings. Uh, again, this is an item that was discussed uh, uh, earlier uh board meetings regarding the campus safety. Um, again, so uh, we're asking for approval. Uh, the equipment is being purchased from RC Communications uh Laredo uh using the Mordor, Mordor Water Solutions DIR contract number two-two-nine-one-eight dash TXDIR TSO forty-one zero one.
Is there a monthly subscription to utilize the radios or?
Uh, no, this is just communication between a, uh, agencies.
Sort of.
Bring me that.
Any questions for members of the committee? Alright, thank you, Mr. Al.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number twelve. Approval of building lease agreement between the Association of Logistics and Boarding Agents Inc. Uh, Alpha and Laredo College, Mr. Cesar.
Uh, yes, uh, board members, we're happy that the board approved a five-year uh building lease agreement with the Association of Logistics and Boarding Agents, Agents Inc., uh, also known as Alpha, uh, for the use of building P four here at the Fort McIntosh campus. Uh, that building is located at the end of uh Lamar Road, uh, right across uh where we have Lu- Lukska. Uh, again, uh, it is a five-year agreement, uh, agreement. Uh, the monthly lease payment is will be four hundred dollars a month. Uh, the lease will begin uh February the first, twenty uh twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, I'm sorry, and run through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, they will be working on the interior of the building, uh, so they'll be uh at no cost to the college, so they'll uh go ahead and work on uh uh repainting the interior, uh, uh, fixing the floor, uh, and uh doing some of the damaged ceiling tiles uh of the facility. Um, they are currently uh, they're leased with the city, uh, is expiring December fifteenth, so they will be moving to campus uh temporarily, uh, utilizing uh, uh, an office at the De La Gasta Building, uh, room one thirteen. Uh, and uh, they will be renting that location for the month of December and January, and uh they should be ready to move into building P four.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
On this, frankly, it is to our benefit that organizations such as this be in our campus. In the long run, makes a very, very positive impact because of their presence, they can also provide support or assistance to our students. And uh, I think if, if we are able to make it even uh the option for them to stay here permanently, in my opinion, that will be to our benefit in the long run.
There are, there are natural employers of our students, and so.
That's correct. Uh, maybe perhaps uh, uh, Dr. Al, maybe you might be able to visit with them and perhaps for them uh to consider the possibility of permanently uh staying in one of our uh facilities here. And uh, that uh, one of the several pluses that, that actually is a benefit to them is we have the presence of law enforcement for one, okay? Uh, in addition to that, the presence of students that eventually they might be, end up being potential employees. Uh, and, and uh, another one is the fact that they actually represent our international trade activity, which is also our major, major source of, of uh uh trade uh in, in, in our, in our country to that effect. So I, I think we ought to try to encourage them to have permanent.
And, and they, and if I may, uh, they, they, we, I have been meeting with them regularly, actually very, very often. Uh, we were able to so- solidify the, the agreement, uh, because they change presidents every two years. Um, it's with an option to renew uh the agreement, and so every president has, will have the option to sign the agreement with us as they move forward. Um, so, so that we can keep that current. Uh, but both Alpha and Lukska are, are both very strong uh partners in our initiative to expand our, our global and legit, uh, import, export and logistics center. And so they're they've been working very closely with um Dr. Tejada and Mr. Deverton Hernandez and their team uh as we are looking forward to expanding uh our reach with that center. And so, and, and you'll hear more about it at the board meeting a- as, as we plan our, our restructuring and reorganization of that area, so. Uh, but yes, we are in constant communication with all of them, so uh they're excited. They're gonna redo the interior of P four. Uh, we're going to continue to maintain the exterior, and they're gonna remodel the inside at their cost. Uh, and so, those are the kinds of renters I like.
Yeah.
And still pay rent. So, we're, we're very grateful to them and to their partnership.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Al.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? We'll move on to agenda item number thirteen. Approval to enter into a two-year agreement with Columbia Advisory Group for Information Security Officer Support Services, Mr. Albert Tass.
Before we go into that item, uh, we did get the update on the cost of the plaque. It's uh seven thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars.
Wow.
How many classes we have?
We're not telling, sir.
Uh, for this, it's just one, but we have
Every building. Sometimes more of a building, more than once.
Are we required to put those questions?
I believe that.
I think it's part of the, i- it's, it's also folded into the cost of the facility. So, yes. For posterity reasons, we want to do that.
Mr. Charles, as far as you would.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Chair and members of the Finance and Audit Committee. Uh, Albert Tass is here, uh, team, uh, sorry. Hello, my president for Information Security, forgot my new title. Uh, for this particular item, we're requesting a, approval to enter into a two-year agreement with the company Columbia Advisory Group for Information Security Officer Support Services. Uh, currently, we have an agreement with uh another company that's going to end on February uh twenty twenty-three. Uh, under this new agreement with this company, which is going to, uh, we would like to procure using an ENI Cooperative Agreement Number CNR zero one four six nine. Uh, the company will fulfill the role of the Information Security Officer for the campus. Uh, the ca- the campus has attempted to uh hire an Information Security Officer in the past. We did have one that did not last very long. We attempted again to hire somebody, and that's uh second search was not successful. So in the prior year or last year, uh, it was decided to uh outsource the services. So we will continue to, uh, the recommendation is to continue doing the same. One of the advantages of this other company that uh we would like to enter into an agreement with is that their offices are in the state of Texas, and if we do need them to come in uh face-to-face, they're able to, to come to campus. Uh, we would just need to cover uh travel for that company. The current company that we have today does not have that service, so everything is, is remote.
And the other advantage, Mr. Al, you like this, currently we're paying a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. This one is sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so there's an advantage again uh financially also, so uh, the, the total for the two years would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Excellent.
Awesome. So one of the, I met with the auditor today. One of our audit, audit findings was making sure that we have a security officer available to us always. It's very difficult to find some one at at the salary that we have, which is a hundred and twenty thousand, because most of the security, cybersecurity officers make a lot more than that, and so, and finding someone locally to do that is very difficult. And so to meet our requirements of the audit and to continue to provide the service, um, Columbia is, is one of the most, I think, well-known out there in the industry and has worked with Albert before and so.
Wonderful. Any questions for members of the committee?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to agenda item number fourteen. Ratification of Laredo International Fair Exposition Scholarship Match, Dr. Almeiz.
Yes, sir. Um, today at the uh Laredo International Fair Exposition um announcement of the Renter of the Year, uh, they announced that uh Mr. Benitez, uh, Anagelo's father would be the Renter of the Year, and in his honor, um they have, the Gale family has given from the trust, ten thousand dollars to be matched by the college with ten thousand dollars uh for scholarships to be awarded to students who have had projects at life. Uh, and we will work jointly with the Life uh Board in the selection of the students who are to be awarded their scholarships. Uh, it was also announced, and you all, you and, and Mr. Al were there, that if anyone wanted to give a donation to the college in the name of Mr. Benitez, they should do it to the college uh, and to add to this fund. Um, ideally, what they're the way it was explained to me by their executive director is that annually they would like to add um, to this fund, uh, monies available to students who might, who may be coming to Laredo College who need a scholarship, especially in the areas of, it's called non-credit programs, but in, in our workforce programs, uh, where's, where financial aid assistance sometimes is not available. And they would like to make that financial assistance available. So our thanks to um, to Don and Anagelo for, for awarding us this money, and so the ratification is we have to receive the money at noon, and so um we'll ask the board to ratify that.
Any questions for members of the committee?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Almeiz. Alright, and that will conclude the Building Committee and Finance Audit Committee meeting. Uh, it is approximately six twenty-eight PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.